I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, December 13th at 7:07 PM. The first agenda item is, is the public hearing is continued for proposed amendments to the regulations governing fees and fee schedules. Larry, did you hear this?
It was a spray of correspondence here from Bill and Jay.
Last email I got from Bill that says Larry will be bringing this up during the fee schedule discussion. So we'll put it in your court, Larry.
So back and forth with the town attorney, Jay Tullman. He recommends that we add the last sentence on the proposed bylaw change. Do you got, everybody have the?
Yeah, I got that. Oh yeah, I got it.
Okay. So we just add the sentence such penalties may be enforced via noncriminal disposition with any violation carrying a penalty of $300 per violation. Do you have that?
Yeah, but I thought we were gonna do per day.
Right, that's what I, that's what.
That's what we talked about last meeting.
Why didn't you include that?
I don't know, I hadn't, I hadn't seen that earlier.
It already has that, each day. It already has that on the, on the existing.
Each day, that each violation can be considered a separate offense, okay.
Each day.
Separate offense, okay.
But state law says you can go up to $300 and if we don't have a specific number, they won't allow it because they'll say.
Now that's, that's for cleaning up their lot too, right? What is that for?
That's basically to get people's attention. Okay, I don't plan on using it unless I've asked and begged.
Somebody tell you, all right, no, that's okay.
Please do something and, yeah.
And they say.
Yeah, okay. So it's a measure of last resort. Collecting it is a process because you go in front of the judge, judge will usually, you know, hear both sides, look at pictures and, you know, if it's atrocious, they'll say, okay, can you have it cleaned up within two months or something like that? We'll be back in two months. It's more pictures than the riot act ensues and fines are imposed. So all this has to go to planning for them to recommend it to go to the town, town meeting in May to vote it off.
So our motion should be to CBA.
They recommend?
Recommends it, recommends to the planning board that this be adopted. Because they're actually, they're the ones who actually make the decision, sorry, the appeal to the town's council. So I guess we probably need a motion that we, we forward this to, we recommend, forward it to the planning board and recommend the adoption of this.
Yeah, the adoption of council's suggestion of such penalties may be enforced via noncriminal disposition within violation carry penalty of 300 per violation. I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Len. Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Did we have to decide on the fees for our application or has that been done by?
I think that was part of this and I think we just, that didn't change.
That didn't change.
Right, so we're voting to adopt the new fee schedule and the, make the zoning bylaw change. Is that what the motion was?
No, it was just for this year. I'm not wondering if we already made a motion last meeting, I have to look at last meeting.
Yep.
For the fee schedule, so I thought we did that.
I thought we did that already.
Yes. Mr. Bumbauer? Mrs. Holmes made a motion as the CBA adopt the amendment, the regulations governing fees and fee schedules as presented. So we're gonna amend that.
Yeah, this is all dated November 8th. It has all the scheduled ones.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing we need to do was go down this.
Go down the amendment, which is, was your motion.
Yep.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry. My brother Darryl, my other brother Darryl.
You know this. The next agenda item is, the public hearing for Donald Farino is requesting a special permit in a rural agriculturally zoned district pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, section 3.4.3, nonconforming structures to allow construction of a new home on a lot where an existing home is currently located. Existing house will be removed and the new home will be built more towards the middle of the lot and will be more conforming with the side yard setbacks than the previous house on property located at 294 Northwest Main Street, assessors map 159, parcel 12. Did we get all the green pads, did that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And we have a correspondence here from, from the planning board that says that we have no objection to the Farino special permit application. Okay. Eric?
Thanks. I'm Eric Mizet with Heritage Design Group, here on behalf of Don Farino, who's also here this evening, and as the advertisement graduate. What we'd like to do is just remove the existing house that's on the property now, put the new house with a new septic system and a new well. Everything will be improved over the existing conditions there. The setbacks will be, will be better, the house will be more centrally located. The lot itself isn't on Northwest Main Street even though it has the address of that, it's on a, it's on a 10-foot wide right of way that goes back to Northwest Main Street. And there's several houses, other houses down here. Not too long ago, Ken Bernard was in with a similar situation. He had the lot, the lot, some houses down from here, and he did just about the same thing that we're proposing to do here. So, but we've filed an application for a special permit and there were several criteria that we, we had to respond to that was in the application for traffic flow and safety. We're gonna be improving the parking situation. We're not gonna change the use of the land, so it's, the social and the community needs will be, won't be impacted. Adequacy of facility, public utilities, there'll be no change in the use, so there won't be any increase in the demand. There'll be no change in the neighborhood character other than improvement of the existing house. Impacts on the natural environment, we're putting in a new septic system, so this, this is gonna improve the situation that we have there now. It's gonna be a Title V system and it has been approved by the Board of Health. Potential fiscal impacts, I'm sure that Tom will receive more tax revenue when the house is replaced with a newer, larger house.
Mike, do you have any building plans for this?
Yeah, sounds good.
So this will be, this will be, this dash line is the foundation wall, so this building wall is gonna be on, on the piers.
Okay, that's gonna, that includes the deck.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I know in the past when we granted variances for these, we've always included square footage.
We have done that in the past, but I think we had a conversation a while back with Larry that the square footage is, what goes on inside, whether it's one story finished or three stories finished, is, falls under the building department and zoning is the distance from the foundation to the lot lines. Because we did, we did have some discussion, or we did actually condition some to that effect.
Right, we conditioned some, yeah.
Building height is an average? Average grade? No.
Building height goes from average grade maximum 35 feet.
Yeah, okay. That's what that is. Every town's different, that's why I'm asking.
Maximum 35 period?
On the average.
So if, if part of it's above 35 and most of it's less than 35, it's?
It's average grade, it's average grade. If it's daylight basement, it's, you take the average from that.
Okay. What is the building height for that?
29?
No, that's average. 29 is a 29, that does 25.
So do we have, do we have cross sections?
Do you only have outside elevations? I have the rest of the plans if you want. I just gave you the elevations.
Yeah, if you have them, okay.
Right, so knowing that that's what it is, we'll keep it under that.
Yeah, we just, we'd like to see it on the plan, so you could.
Well, on that front page elevation, it shows you a 29 feet average height.
29 foot 26.
And our towns do the same?
35 average, yeah, all towns are except for the town of Weston.
That's 35 max, is that 35 average Larry or 35 maximum?
35 maximum.
Max. But it goes by the average grade, so if you do have a cliff behind your house, right?
Yeah.
You might be in trouble, but.
Yeah, but don't count really, you gotta go by the most.
Point, you know, every corner or however the engineer wants to.
The Board of Health approval was on a total number of rooms anyways, correct?
Eight rooms.
No rooms.
No rooms?
It's by the figure, it's by number of rooms.
Yeah, there's quite a difference in grades from the front to the back, so it might be high on the water side, but it's gonna be low on it because it's almost, I think it's almost 30 feet.
So you can have 11 rooms and have a five bedroom, so it's a substantial. They go by number of rooms, round and round.
Well, if it's the medium, average medium in the, I mean, that would be Larry, so.
They do count the rooms because you can make a room.
It's 20, 20 feet, it goes from elevation 80 down to water to 100 up here. We're proposing a garage slab at 100 and then the house slab would be at 85, so 15 feet.
15 feet difference in elevation?
Yeah. On this end, it's not gonna be very high at all. It'll be high on this end, almost by necessity because there's so much dropping grade across the lot.
So you want to have any additional questions for the afternoon representative? Is anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this application? There's no other questions, I guess we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make the motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Demers to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Tassino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is called. Would you like to move forward with the decision, Stephen?
I don't have any other questions.
Yeah.
You have any questions for the afternoon? Nope.
Nope. No. I'll make a, entertain a motion. The motion would be to grant the special permit for case number 2-2017-10 as planned submitted.
Or the plans submitted.
For the plans.
Second.
Yeah, second. Okay, okay, we have a motion by Mr. Demers to approve the special permit application for Don Farino as per the plan submitted. Any other things we wanna?
No, we'll just second the motion.
I second. Oh, seconded by Mr. Tassino. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Special permit is approved and we will get the decision drafted and get it signed into the town clerk as soon as it's practical.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you gonna keep the building plans?
We'd like to and we use it as a, a way we can reference them in the file.
Did you give them back his floor plans?
Probably across sections, most important.
All right.
Do you have a problem with keep the whole thing or just keep it in the file?
You can have it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Is that ready here for the other one?
I think so, but it's gonna come up in three minutes. Okay, we have a couple minutes before the next public hearing, so if you want, we could do the minutes of meeting on November 8th. Just for the record, actually, Mrs. Holmes, Mr. Holland and Mr. Bumbauer have excused abs this, this evening. They all notified Maria. There's one change that I see right off the bat on these minutes, Sean Hollins had an excused absence. He had actually left a message on Maria's phone during the, before the meeting.
Okay.
Whatever was in here, so that would be excused.
Make a motion to accept the zoning board meeting minutes Wednesday, November 8th, 2017.
As amended?
As amended, as amended, yes.
Sean Hollins has an excuse. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the minutes of November 8th as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Demers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of November 8th are approved as amended. Okay, we have 7:30, so we can, we'll, it's for the next public hearing. The next, next hearing is, the public hearing continued. Robert Parent and Carol Dolan, 12 Roslin Road, and I received a letter, we received a letter stating they are withdrawing their application for the variance, therefore they apply for a special permit. So I guess we just need to vote to accept their withdrawal letter for the, for the variance.
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal letter submitted for the variance.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to accept the Parent and Dolan letter withdrawing their variance request. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have, the next public hearing doesn't start, wasn't advertised till 7:30.
About 7:30.
Okay.
For the special permit.
The, the next case is a case number 2017-11, the public hearing for Robert Parent and Carol Because we have three members out and Mr. Tassino is in the bottom, we, we need to continue this public hearing until next month. So we continue that till, what, 7:30, Maria?
No, that would be 7:15.
7:15, okay. All right. So we would need to continue that till 7:15.
On January 10th.
On January 10th.
So I make a motion to continue case number 2017-11 until the January 10th.
7:15.
7:15.
We have a motion by Mr. Demers to continue the public hearing till January 10th at 7:15. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tassino. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
No.
Yeah, that's probably correct.
Well, that remains, yeah, 2017, yeah, yeah.
Be careful.
Right, yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it's Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Demers and myself, and Mr. Tassino is in the bottom. The next public hearing is at 7:45, so we have a few minutes to tell. We have the 2018 meeting dates, if anybody has a chance to review it.
Okay, so I gotta take off, right? You guys have got everything.
Yeah, we're just gonna, just have to approve the meeting dates for next year, okay?
What's the voucher on number three?
Yes, same voucher.
That's right, just to be signed.
Well, I didn't know if he had to sign it so before I tried to escape.
Yeah, if you want to sign those.
Keep my eye on him.
Yeah, that's okay, kid, that's okay.
Am I right or am I wrong?
You're right.
I got to use it again, Louis.
I see.
I haven't missed a meeting yet with him.
You're learning, that's good, that's good, I'm glad. Wait let me check this.
Oh, this is about, I'm sorry.
Mess away, Louis.
There you go.
That's the one you gotta keep your eye on.
Hey, we've been friends for years.
Hey, what happened to Charlie's arm? I seen him in the truck yesterday.
Cut his bone because he was getting that.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, cut his bone and they put a new bone in there, like a claw, grabbed his two fingers. Says you're doing fine.
I seen him in the truck yesterday, I was gonna go ask, I said, what'd you do, I'm Russell Louis who already got raised and you lost?
Yeah, yeah, you've been here 30 years.
Somebody collapsed in the model last weekend?
Broke his leg, in honesty, yes.
That's what happened?
Second floor, right? Now there's arm bannuses on both sides. The guy's about 58 years old. Arm bannuses on both sides, I don't know, he missed an arm bannus or something, he went down and broke his leg. So, you know. Accidents happen.
That's why we've always done it.
Yes, I did. I called my insurance company, I said, you know that bet I had with you? You bet it wasn't gonna happen and I bet it was? Guess what?
Easier than me.
I won.
Well, if you get a big settlement, you can win.
He was already buying a house. He went up just to, just to look around him as well and she was behind him and I don't know if he turned around or she, you know, I mean, something, but poor bastard broke his leg. And then the fire department comes in and.
They come in with the ads?
No, they gotta take him up over the, over the staircase. I told him, just cut the.
Oh, this is about, I'm sorry.
That's the way, Lou.
There you go.
That's the way you got to keep your eye on him.
Hey, we've been friends for years. Okay. Okay.
Hey, what happened to Charlie's arm? I seen him in the truck yesterday.
Cut his bone, because he was getting that.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, cut his bone and they put a new bone in there, like a claw. Grab those two fingers. Says you're doing fine.
I seen him in the truck yesterday. I pulled in at the gas station. I was going to go ask him, what'd you do, arm wrestling, Louie, for already a raise and you lost?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Been here 30 years.
Or did somebody collapse in the model last weekend?
Broke his leg, down the stairs.
That's what happened?
Second floor, right? Now, there's arm bannisters on both sides. This guy's about 58 years old. Arm bannister on both sides. I don't know, he missed an arm bannister or something, he went down and broke his leg. So, you know. Accidents happen. That's what I did. I called my insurance company, I said, you know that bet I had with you? You bet it wasn't going to happen, and I bet it was. Guess what?
Easier than me.
I won. You got it right.
Well, if you get a big settlement, you go ahead. Are you still with him?
He was, he was already buying a house. He went up just to, just to look around him as well. And she was behind him, and I don't know if he turned around or she, you know what I mean, something, but poor man's brother's leg. And then, if I had a father comes in and... No, they got to take him up over the staircase. I told him, just cut the railings, all right? Cut the railings, you got a saw, cut the railings, we'll just, oh, we don't want to do no damage. Cut the railings, that's what we do for a living here. So they picked him up, they get enough guys, they took him out.
Hey, thank you very much.
Take it easy.
Have a good Christmas.
Thank you, fantastic Christmas. Okay, girls, take it easy.
Good night.
Thank you.
So we just, can't start a public hearing before it's advertised, so we just need to wait five minutes.
Yeah. When's John go to Florida?
I don't know. He had some health issues and his wife just had a hip replacement.
So he might not be gone? But he's going to take the winter route, I'm taking the summer route.
I don't know, I don't know what the answer is to that. I don't know if he's going or not. I know he, he did tell me his wife just had a hip replacement.
If he's on the board, he's on the board. If he's only going to be on the second month, he's going to be a full member.
So do we, do we vote on the...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the dates, the proposed dates for the 2018 schedule.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Demers to accept the schedule of hearing date. Yeah, yeah, actually, I did talk to Jake. You can do it by necessity on these type of things, but you can't do it on someone's hearing.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Demers, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to approve the meeting dates for 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A couple minutes.
So he went back to court again for that?
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Did you want to do the annual time report?
You got that in here, yeah?
Yeah. The copy, what was going to be submitted in the town?
Yeah, I would, I would, I don't see it on here. So we say the ZDA meetings are scheduled every first Wednesday of the month.
This is second.
Oh, it says every first.
It does say every first, yeah.
Wednesday of the month.
Good catch.
Thanks, Lou.
Well, I'm, my point was, we did meet at the first Wednesday of the month, but mid-year, we changed it to the second Wednesday. Do we want to mention that, or just say, because we're saying this is January 1st, 2017, December 31st. We used to meet first Wednesday, if we want to make a note, you know. We started off meeting the first Wednesday of the month, and I'm not sure what month we changed it.
We started in July.
It was when Larry requested it.
Yeah. We started it, right?
And then the meeting in July, it was changed to the second Wednesday of the month. Just, it's a bit more confused.
Great, thank you.
Merry Christmas. Excuse me, are you Patty?
Yes.
I just want to let you know that your letter was received and it'll be addressed when the public hearing opens next month.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I was speaking freely, the day that I said that the electrical box was in and then the meter was up?
You know, we really can't discuss the case until the public hearing. But I just wanted to let you know.
Well, that's the whole reason why, because he was, I'm sitting there going...
Yeah, I just want to let you know, we did get it, and it'll be addressed at next month's meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll amend the annual report to say that our meeting dates were changed mid-year to the second Wednesday of the month. I guess we need...
Was that the request of, why did we do that?
So Larry can attend the meetings.
Oh, right, right.
He has another commitment.
Yeah.
The first Monday, the first Wednesday of every month.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept this write-up for the annual meeting, the town annual meeting in May, with the addition of the explanation of the change when we meet from the first.
This goes into the annual report.
Into the annual report.
Yeah.
That's presented at the...
It's published, actually.
It's published.
Published into that, yeah. So we have a motion by Mr. Demers to amend the annual report to change, to say that we changed our meeting dates mid-year, in that it's, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then the last case of the, that is 2017-12, public hearing for Robert Parent and Carol Dolan. Again, we don't have a quorum, so we are going to continue this till 7:00 PM.
On January 10.
On January 10. Okay, so we have a motion to continue the public hearing till 7:00 PM on 10th. Oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
You might want to take that case before the previous one.
We did, we are.
Yeah, 7 o'clock.
The previous one was at 7:15. And this one will be at 7:00 PM. Okay. We have a motion to continue this to 7:00 PM on January 10.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, motion made by Mr. Demers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that public hearing is continued to January 10 at 7:00 PM. I don't think we have any other business this evening.
Make a motion to adjourn our meeting. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Demers to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting's adjourned at 7:46 PM.